We'll call the May 24th, 2016 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We're supposed to have Mr. Vanover here from Rule Retreat Baptist Church, but he's sick this morning, so Dr. Gary Hausman will give the implication. And please remain standing for the pledge afterwards.
Let's pray. Dear Fathers, we come together today, and especially as we come together as the Board of Supervisors, we thank you for the honor and the privilege and responsibility to serve. Father, let us understand, though, that we do not operate in a vacuum, that any decision that we make will affect the nearly 30,000 people who live in With County. Fathers, we keep that in mind. Let us discuss, speak, listen, consider with humility, discernment, and courage. And Father, let us make the best decision that we possibly can in any and all matters, and those decisions that will benefit With County and will honor you. That is our simple prayer this morning. We ask it in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning and welcome, everyone. We'll get started right into our agenda. We have Citizens Time. We have three individuals that signed up. John R. Todd, come on up to speak. And please give your name, address, please.
Good morning. My name is John Todd. I live at 645 Rolling Hills Drive, Withville. We've lived here since the early 70s. I've known everyone that's involved with the Sheriff's Department since we moved here. I worked at the hospital and I had a lot of affiliation with the Sheriff's Department. I know I put down on this statement, safety is what I want to talk about, and that is, our Sheriff's Department provides our safety and our security, which should be the primary concern of you folks, which I've heard a lot of things about, what's been said about the Board of Supervisor, Administrator, and other things else. I've always admired our Sheriff's Department. We have one of the best Sheriff's Departments in the United States. When they compete in national events, they rate very high, usually first. It has been referred to by one member of this group, which I don't know if Mr. Dalton is here or not, he calls that it's referred to the Mayberry Sheriff's Department, which I think is a slap in the face. I also think it's a slap in the face when the members of our community have to go out and get cameras for our Sheriff's Department. Where are you going to get the funds to do the security for the schools? I understand the town is willing to try to get a grant so they can have security officers in the school in town. And they also said if they can't do that, then they would probably pay for it themselves. What about the other schools, the other members of the county? Now, we have a good Sheriff's Department. We pay no taxes for the Sheriff's Department. They generate their own funds. And it's just, I think there's a definite problem in how that funding is made, how it's spent, and what they have to go through to get the money that they're supposed to. I think you all need to sit down and come up with some means that where the Sheriff's Department can get the funding that they need for all the projects they have. Now, you need to go out and get members of the community and the department to figure this stuff out. They should not have to go and grovel to one person or one group of persons to try to get something done, the funding for things that they generate the funds for. Now, they're not allowed to set their budgets, just go out and get a bunch of tickets. But that's where they're funded from. And when Wayne Pike came in, he and the Board of Supervisors said that the revenues from the arrests or from the fines, the Sheriff's Department would get 80% of the funding. The county would get 20%. Now, as I understand, that ratio is now off, that as anything else, when somebody's pretty successful about exceeding budgets or having a budget, the other people want to come in and take part of that funding. I know the state has tried to get in and take part of the funding, the money that comes off the interstate. But I would like, as a citizen, is you stress the security and the safety of our citizens. And just as a passing thought, 10 soccer fields up next to a truck stop is not very safe, and it's not very secure, and it's a hazard to the youth, which is a very important part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. William Durham.
William Durham, live at 675 Rolling Hills Drive here in Withville. You can tell John and I are neighbors. We talk a lot. I'm an amateur radio operator. I listen to scanners a lot, mainly the Sheriff's Department. Did do the town until they updated to digital equipment. Did the state, they went up to digital. I understand we're still analog in the backwoods here because they don't have the funds to come update it with the new technology. And I see that the funding here that we ran to on this, because I remember back when Wayne Pike and I were friends, that there was money and how he could generate money to keep his department and move ahead. And now with the cost of stuff that y'all know, you can't go out and buy a place car what you bought it for 20 years ago. You can't go out and buy radios what you used to buy 20 years ago. But now they're trying to do this simply by their own self. And I feel like the county owes some to their citizens from their money to help these gentlemen, these fine gentlemen right here. And if you ever listen to a scanner, I wish that each one of you would go over here and sit down in Central for a day to listen to what they do. They travel, I have heard calls where they have to come from one side of the county to the other to cover the citizen or to protect one another. Today, you just can't go on a call with one officer. Most of the time, it takes two, especially in domestic things. And the situation we're running now, police departments are getting under fire. Seems like the whole world's trying to say, well, policemen are bad. But we've got the finest, honest people we have that can find right over here. And they need our support. They're out here protecting us, but now we need to protect their position. And they need some funding. And I think it's just a matter of y'all deciding on how much to give them, and they need to get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. William. Next, Ms. Linda Myers.
Yeah, gentlemen, I was wondering if you were going to have a public session before the budget hearing about the budget?
We'll have a public hearing tonight on the budget.
I know, but are you going to have an information section before so the people can ask you questions because you guys don't want to ask or answer questions at the public hearing?
Like, what do you want to know, Ms. Myers?
Well, account number 1221 is totally empty. Where is it? There's no funding for that. And then there is also, is it mixed in with other professional services? Because now professional services on a few pages is over $100,000. So I was wondering if you guys were going to have questions before the public hearing concerning the actual budget, which, as you know, didn't get published online until yesterday. So you're not giving the public a whole lot of time to scrutinize this. Then there was a question about the wastewater salaries are up by $100,000 on that line item. Like, do we get two more employees or what's cooking with that? So there's all kinds of questions about the budget that the public would like answered before the public hearing. Can that happen?
We'll discuss it, and we may have, you got the opportunity tonight to come before the board and speak at the public hearing.
Well, I speak at the public hearing, but you don't answer my questions, so it doesn't do any good.
Well, I don't have the budget in front of me right now, so I can't answer your questions on the budget right now. We'll, I'll get with Mr. Dalton, and we may have a time before the meeting.
Okay, and then I had also asked you, when I sent in a request about seeing the budget online a couple of weeks ago, that there still is no salary schedule posted. The last salary schedule was about three years ago for employees, and the public would really like that posted as soon as possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know some people come in late that didn't get to sign up for Citizens Time. Is anyone else would like to speak? You're in Citizens Time. Seeing no one, I'll close Citizens Time. We'll go on with our agenda. Gentlemen, we have the minutes of the previous meeting made the 10th and made the 17th of 2016. I entertain a motion to approve.
Chairman, I'll make it motion.
I have a second. Second. Have a motion and second to approve the made the 10th and 17th minutes. Any corrections or changes need to be made. Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne.
Aye.
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 On the chair votes side. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices. I entertain a motion to pay the invoices.
Make a motion to pay the invoices.
I have a second. Second. Have a motion and a second. Pay the invoice. Any board member would like to discuss any invoice?
Excuse me, can we have the code unit table up on the floor of the invoices? Thank you.
Here and now, discussion. I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 On the chair votes side. Next item on the agenda is all business. Under appointments, we have With County Planning Commission, Ace Wiffle. Mr. Willis?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Fred Mason at 3010 Crockett's Cove Road to East Withville Planning District.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Willis. I have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, appointments of With County Rescue Squad. I have two, Mr. Danny Gordon and Mr. Paul Castle. I have talked to both of them, and they're willing to serve on the With County Rescue Squad Board. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Mr. Danny Gordon and Paul Castle, the With County Rescue Squad Board, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We still have one member to appoint.
Mr. Chairman, I just got an email, I guess just yesterday maybe, from Mike Forrest, and said that he had spoken to a Dr. Al Amor. I don't know him, and I certainly hadn't had time to get in touch with him, but I didn't know if anybody knew him or not.
I don't know him, Dr. Hausman. If you would, would you try to get in contact with him and see if he's willing to serve?
I can do.
We can appoint him tonight, tomorrow night?
Okay, one of those nights up.
Okay. Lead Mines Rescue Squad. We still have one appointment. Does anybody have, anybody willing to serve on Lead Mines Rescue Squad Board?
Oh, and I've discussed a couple of people. We haven't got an answer back from them yet.
Okay, we'll still work on that. With County Recreation Commission, Lead Mines.
I've spoken to someone. He's supposed to get back to me today. I'll do it again tonight or tomorrow.
And last is New River Regional Water Authority. I entertain a motion.
I'm on it.
I know it. We need one more for the board beyond it.
On July 1st, we'll have three members on that board instead of two. So the appointment would be effective July 1st of 2016.
If I nominate Mr. Horne, would he do it?
Yeah, I mean, I was on it before.
Okay, I'll nominate Mr. Horne.
I have a second.
Aye.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I oppose?
Okay, that takes care of, Mr. Dalton, is there anything else under all business?
I see none, haven't.
Thank you. Well, we're going to reports. Have our Treasurer, Lord Gwynn. Good morning, Ms. Gwynn.
Okay, our financial report for the month ending April 30th, and our consolidated account, we had $55,214,704. Our general fund had $37,266, $266,569. Kind of an update on things going on in our office. Of course, our tax collections have slowed a little bit. However, we did place DMV stops on May 6th. We are slowly catching people in personal property taxes that haven't been paid. So those have been uploaded, and it's kind of downtime for tax purposes in our office. On May 11th, we conducted our tax sale. We sold 19 properties that owed delinquent taxes to the county. Six properties were redeemed, so those were pulled from the sale prior to sale time at 2:00 o'clock that day. We had 68 registered bidders and just estimating probably over 100 attendees. So I felt like it was very successful. Being new, I did not know what to expect because this is a new process for me, but I felt like it went really well. So hopefully, we now have at least 19 properties back into the hands of tax-paying citizens of With County. The attorneys are continuing to work on information to send to the Circuit Court Judge for approval because that judge will actually approve the sales of those properties, and that is to be held around mid-June. So we should have everything finalized on that by that point. And that is all I have this morning. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Gwynn?
Okay.
Lori, I want to thank you for all your efforts so far.
Well, the tax sale, people have commented, wow, you work really fast. But Mr. Crockett began this process three years ago. It's just finishing it up. So it's been a long time coming, but we'll get this wrapped up and start on the next one because there's plenty more out there that we can put up for tax sale, just to hopefully get the taxes paid.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I noticed Fay back there. Fay, do you have anything? You want to give a report on the reassessment? Good morning.
I talked to one of the men from reassessment yesterday, and they're down to one assessor, so they must be getting close to being finished and, or the fieldwork, or the first round. I think they have to go back again because I've got a stack about this high on my desk that they can't find. And when I look on the map, they're right there, so I don't know, I don't know what the reason is that they can't find them. But I think it's going really well, and I think they'll be finished probably by early August or 1st of September, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Sheriff Keith Nunnigan. First item is weapons.
The weapons that you declared surplus, we looked into two options. Bulk sale, like a law enforcement supply, that's an FFL, or auction. And we got an offer on the Berettas at...
$2.50.
$2.50 apiece, which last time we sold those things, and I talked to town police supply, they were only willing to give us $140 for. So I think that's a pretty good price on the Berettas, and we've got, Southern Police has offered us $8,000 for the whole shooting match. Now, we could...
That's Southern Police?
Richmond in Detroit. Or the other option would be to sell them at auction and put a minimum bid on them.
Seen the board members have any questions about the weapons?
My only question is, last time when we talked about auction, if we put them up for auction, once you sell one of those guns, does it not kind of set the price for the rest of them?
No, we've got so many of them that your first one will probably bring the most, well, I'm not necessarily the first one. It's the condition of the guns is what the people are looking for, and some of these things are kind of beat up. But we've got so many of them that when it gets down to the last few guns, they're not going to bring very much at all. And that's one problem with selling the pistols at auction. Now, the long guns, you know, it may be better just to go ahead and take the $2.50 offer on the pistols and take the long guns and take them to auction. We could split it up and do it that way. You guys just tell me what you want to do, and I'll take care of it.
Seen anybody else have any questions?
I'd just like to, what do you recommend?
I think you'd get more money by taking the $2.50 from Southern, selling the pistols, and go over to Duke and let him auction off the long guns. Because I don't think they're actually giving us the value on the long guns, you know, with the additional $3,000.
To do the auction, don't we have to put that out to bid?
Well, there's several auction companies I guess we've already solicited at different times.
We're actually dealing with an auction company on those guns that were forfeited in one of the drug cases. We got some pretty valuable guns there, so we, I don't know that some of the guns that we've got in this batch would be worth going to that kind of auction with, but to an auctioneer with an FFL, I think they might bring more money than we get from Southern. Last time Duke did it, I think he did it for free, the last batch of pistols, didn't he do that for free?
I don't remember any.
I think he did.
If you want to put it out for bid, we can do that.
Typically, if you can find somebody selling some guns.
Get it in, whether it's an auction or there's other guns.
Get it in an auction, then there's a bunch of guns that are desirable out there. It's hard to have your own auction, I believe. How many long guns?
Go ahead.
I have pretty much on the bottom of this list.
Scroll that.
Yeah, that's like 10.
10? 10.
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I would go with the Sheriff's recommendation that we take the $2.50 for the pistols and then go to auction with the long guns. I'll make that as a motion.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 On the chair votes side. Okay, Sheriff, Police Activity Fund.
The first document that I'm going to show you is this one. This one is the 1985 where the board took action to establish the Police Activity Fund. And that was before we started the traffic program. At that time, we had some money from a federal case, some seizure money. And Sheriff Pike wanted to put that away somewhere where he could use it for various things. And those things were to be for special police activities. That's what that fund was established for. And on the back of that, the Police Activity is the agreement between the county and the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office would take 80%, and the county would take 20%. Second document, number two, would be this one. And this is where Sheriff Pike had asked that the board adopt the state code as the county code. And they discussed, they appointed the split, and at that time, it's not in these minutes. Somewhere around that time, Sheriff Pike agreed that if they would adopt the state code as the county code, that he would provide for, he would buy the police cars each year. Document three is part of, is a few pages, first, I think it's the first six months of this year, and what we've taken, what we've spent. We have, I don't have the last six months for you. Mr. Grant's been real busy on this new software, so wasn't able to get those. But we already had the first six months. The things you see in blue are things that the county pays, and they get either all fully reimbursed or partially reimbursed for those. The green things are just things that the county pays. The yellow are everything we're paying out of the Police Activity Fund. The original agreement was that we would pay motor vehicles, and it's grown to everything except the blue and the green today. Document number four is personnel that we're paying for out of the Police Activity Fund. In past years, the Police Activity Fund has been used to pay matching funds for grants, and at the end of those grant periods, we retain some of the people that were hired by those grants. Some of them have gone to the wayside by attrition, but we still are paying about $750,000 a year for personnel. And that was, and the previous sheriffs agreed to that, and I'm fine with doing, continuing to do that.
And that's officers, it's not comp board positions?
That's right.
How many officers is?
There's, we're paying for 11 deputy sheriffs and, well, I take it back, 10 deputies. You're paying for V-stop. And we're also funding Sally's position. When the economy was real bad and the comp board was making a lot of budget cuts, they cut that position. It would be very tough for us to operate without a records clerk. So we retained that position. So that's actually one that doesn't show on here, that we're still funding that one as well. Document number five shows you the tickets that we have written on the interstate. If you look prior to 2014, it's probably going to average around 16,000 tickets a year. If you look at 2014, you'll find that we've written 18,000, over 18,000. And if you look at 2015, we wrote over 19,000, and we're on track to do that again this year. We're just now getting to the good months where the weather is good a lot longer, and we're looking at doing that again. So it's not a production issue that's causing the Police Activity Fund to go down. We're writing more tickets than we ever have. Document number six is a physical summary from 2006 to 2016. Now, if you look at this document under expenditures for 67, 78, 89, and 910, you'll see that our expenditures for the Police Activity Fund at that point are fairly constant. And you'll see that the Police Activity Fund was very healthy at that time. There was 2.3... There was 2.3 million dollars in it, uh, year in balance in 2010. Following 2010, you see that take a huge jump. It almost doubles what is being taken out of the Police Activity Fund. That's because the other document I showed you, the blue, the green, and the yellow, the county was funding those position, the yellow with the exception of motor vehicles prior to 2010. And after 2010, that changed somehow. How it changed, I don't know. I've talked to Sheriff King, he's here, I'm going to let him speak to you in just a few minutes. He didn't agree to that. I don't agree with doing that now. And that is what is breaking the back of the Police Activity Fund. Documents, uh, seven, A, B, and C are, uh, reports that Lori sends us each month. And Lori was able to provide me with a lot of this information. So thank you very much, Lori. I know we've worked, we worked her pretty hard here recently. But if you look at, uh, I forget what I have, February, March, and April. In March, we had deposits of, uh, almost 120,000, our bills were about 70,000, so that worked out pretty good. But it didn't include January's expenditures which show up on the March report. So the March report, we actually take in deposits of 133,000, but we spent 190,000. And April is a pretty normal month for us. We took in 108 and we're paying out 118. So we're, we're paying out of the Police Activity Fund more than we're putting it in almost every month at this point. Now, here's a document that we received from Mr. Grant. And it, he, he told Major Klein that this was the agreement that Sheriff King had made. And I'd like to get Doug up if I could right now and let him talk about this, uh, what he actually agreed to pay for.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning, Sheriff King. Hope you're enjoying your retirement.
Well, I was till today. I expected to be fishing somewhere else. Until I got a call about this, um, I had previously expected my appearance at the board to be the reception of a General Assembly Joint Resolution honoring my service for the West County Sheriff's Office and the citizens of the West County, uh, which I have not yet received, I might add, even though it was passed in 2015. Uh, in my previous meetings with the board, I've always been accused of being a skinflint. I guarded the, uh, Police Activity Fund zealously, okay? This document here, I do not recall this. If any document had been presented to me saying, "This is what the county has been paying in the past and this is what we want you to pay now out of the Police Activity Fund." If it'd been presented in that manner, I would have rejected it out of hand. I wouldn't have assumed cost to be taken out of the Police Activity Fund that I expected to be paid by the county. I agreed for the expenses for grant personnel. I agreed for the hazardous duty pay supplement to be taken out of the Police Activity Fund as well as raises for the sheriff's office because they had not received a raise in so long. Now, there are numerous other items like equipment and cars that had already been previously agreed to, uh, by previous sheriffs, and I honored that agreement. What's being anticipated now, from what I understand, is going to be the elimination of, um, the hazardous duty supplement and the possible loss of personnel. These guys put their lives on the line every single day and night. By the hazardous duty pay and by the raise that I agreed to for the sheriff's office, it was to bring it more in line with area offices because we were hemorrhaging personnel. Once this passed, that slowed and for quite some time it ceased, but you'll always have some turnover. If you eliminate that by saying that sheriff's office has to fund everything, which from what I understand is what's happening now, I can tell you right now, your morale among these men here is going to be lower than the floor that I'm standing on. Who wants to risk their life for wages that are barely above the levels that you're, uh, are available? Or how should I put this? You could basically get food stamp assistance and you're a sworn law enforcement officer. Something has to be done. Apparently, we've been paying more than our share, uh, well, I can't say we anymore because I'm not here, but in the past, a lot of money has been generated by the sheriff's office and paid for items, expenses, personnel that the county didn't have to fund. Now, what's happened since, I haven't kept up with. That's the reason I retired, so I didn't have to keep up with these things. It keeps you awake at night. You lie awake in bed at night waiting for a phone call or thinking about what's happened to your personnel. We've got a national level sheriff's office here. By one means or another, they have to have the continued support of this board. If we do not, if they do not have the continued support of this board, you're jeopardizing the safety of everybody in the county. If you're talking about cutting positions for officers that are guarding our schools, uh, I suggest all of you read the newspaper during the day to see what's going on. I suggest that you look and see, uh, the fatalities that have occurred among sheriff's deputies and police officers in the last two years alone. It's a dangerous profession. You need experienced professionals, which we, they have, hard, hard to stop saying we, after, uh, almost 32 years of association with the sheriff's office. However, it can be addressed to where it continues to provide the level of services that are being provided now must be done.
Is that all, Mr. King?
All right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Got it.
Gentlemen, that's about all I have for you. I don't think that I have to remind you in, that these are very trying times for law enforcement. And for the last few months, I have spent most of my time trying to decipher what was going on with the Police Activity Fund. It would be my request right now to have the county honor the original agreement, continue to pay their part of the Police Activity Fund, and reimburse the Police Activity Fund for things that have been taken out of it that, uh, were not agreed to. That's what I would like. And I would like to get back to worrying about law enforcement instead of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Dalton, do you have anything to add?
Just to follow up, I gave you four graphs of the, uh, the last four years, the tax of the fund balance. As I hand the deposit, I was telling somebody earlier, said something about the deposit. Clearly showed the public deposits of 20% less dependent than the treasurer's deposit. Those are those correct, the treasury's part. Those are the deposits as is, contrary to the rumors and suggestions. However, Doug, you still sitting there? Part of the discussions when we gave the raises is...
Could you speak up?
Part of the discussions with Doug when we sat in the back room here and talked about that, I think Doug will verify this, that we've always said that when the sheriff came forth with a request from the Police Activity Fund, there's never been a no. He's shaking his head yes. That's right. So the whole issue, have the funds been deposited properly? Yes, they have. There's no question about it.
We don't question that the 80% funds are not being deposited properly, but they're not intended to...
The second part is, is I look at your number one here. The, the court systems has changed since 1991. All asset forfeiture's go directly to, not to this Police Activity Fund, but to Asset Porfection Fund, either the state or federal, which is kept separately. But you, the sheriff periodically says, "For certain things, I want to spend this money." Sheriff's only, the courtroom security fee, which is not part of this, is also directed funding the sheriff's and courtroom security. We'll look at it, but at the end of the day, and I think Doug King eloquently said in the back room that day when we agreed for the 5% in the hazard of this duty, if, I asked the question, "What happens if we run out of money?" And he said, "We'll deal with it when that happens." So we're getting close to that, dealing with it when it happens.
We, we don't question that the 80, 20 split is happening, but the, our 80% was meant for special police activities, not to, uh, pay for paper and pens and bullets and toilet
Mr. Chairman, may I ask one, just one question?
Yes.
Looking at this chart that we have, the Police Activities Fund monthly balance, uh, and, and this, you know, Sheriff Duncan gave us, the, the one thing I've been, you know, trying to find out is, is this, back in, uh, if you look at December 2012, I guess, that's when the Police Activities Fund was, was at its highest, it looks like about, I don't know, 1.6 million dollars. These things that are in, in yellow that, uh, Sheriff Duncan says that the Police Activities Fund paid, were they being taken out at, at that time in December of 2012?
As far as we know, it started in 2010. If you look at, if you...
So these have been, these were taken out even when it was like at 1.6?
If you look at 2010, you'll see the ending balance was 2.3 million dollars. And that's when the, uh, that's when we started paying for everything instead of just cars. The original agreement was we would buy cars and that ended up, take that away, the county wouldn't have to worry about getting those cars anymore. But the county still funded our budget, all the yellow items, with the exception of, I'd have to look at, there may be another item or two in there that we weren't paying out of the Police Activity Fund. But, um, everything up until 2010 was paid by the county. Gene, you and Coy were on the board in 2010, was there any action by the board to reverse that?
Not to my knowledge.
Well...
I just come on, Jim King.
If it, if it existed, we couldn't find it. So somebody, somebody's changed it. And it's, it's not a change that anybody, the sheriff's office has agreed to. No sheriff, the only people who've been sheriff are Doug and I during that time period. Neither one of us agreed to do that.
Well, you know, when, when you and I talked, that was, that was the one thing that I, I asked is, you know, if, when it was at its highest, you know, was, were these, uh, items coming out, you know? That was, that was what I was trying to determine.
That's what started the decline.
Uh, but in, 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 uh, 2012, these were, these were coming out too? Okay.
From two, best we could figure, from 2010 till current, those are being taken out. And that's, we never agreed to that. I didn't agree to it, Doug didn't agree to it. And that's what needs to happen to make the, to keep the Police Activity Fund solid. It needs to go back where you guys are paying your share. And that's what I'd like to see happen.
Does anyone have any other questions? Comments?
I done a, I done a quick figure here on the, the Yala, you're paying out close to $650,000.
I believe that's a little low. Yeah, there's, best figure to go, that's varied a little bit, see what you're looking at now. So that's only five months that you got in hand.
This is for five months, but, but the motor vehicle, that would be for a year.
When we buy vehicles, we used to buy, you know, a half dozen at a time. And, uh, then if we have, if we have one, we may have to buy another vehicle two or three times a year. So you don't see vehicles on those monthly sheets showing up all the time. They only show up two or three times a year.
On the average year, how many cars get replaced by the acquisition or by insurance replacement?
I would say average between six and eight cars.
You got how many, 60 some cars?
Forty-two, I believe.
I realize all cars don't get the same mileage, but is there any trend of whether it's a road deputy, shift deputy, or an investigator, do cars have a life?
Uh, do they have a life?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, all of them don't get the same usage and on other surface roads.
An investigator doesn't, is not going to push his car as hard as a patrolman is normally. But the recommendation to, for police cars is to change around 100,000 miles. We can't do that. We can't even buy any cars at this point, Doug. If I bought cars right now, it'd break, that'd be the end of Police Activity Fund.
Are all the cars pre-equipped with the interceptor package?
The, they're, they're law enforcement package cars. And they could, they'll... And they could, they'll, the patrol cars come pre-wired, even got that, the sport utility vehicles, we got some of those last year, so we'd have them for bad weather. And you can even get those pre-wired now, but there's a pursuit rated SUV now.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask, can we have the, do we have the historical data that we can make a chart like this beginning about '09?
Maybe, maybe not, but we'll look at it. But we'll change the accounting just to...
I understand, that's why I asked if we had that, you know, if we had that data, because I think that that would be very beneficial, you know, for us in, in looking at that. You know, prior to, because Keith, you said it started coming out in 2010?
If you look at, if you look at that thing Lori made for us, you'll, you can see from 2006 to 2010, we're paying between $800 and $1 million a year out of the Police Activity Fund. After that, you're paying, we're paying almost $2 million a year.
Okay, and this is, appears is, you know, the, the last half of the fiscal year 2012, and then, you know, 2013, but if we could have that, you know, put that data in a, you know, in a, in a bar graph form, just like this, I think it'd be helpful for us to, to, you know, to have, to understand.
Right. Anybody else, any questions?
Anybody else got any questions, for sure? What my recommendation is, board can, I'd like for you and Mr. Dalton to get together and sit down and go over the budget, the sheriff's budget, and, and come up with something that you can bring back to the board. I know we're having a public hearing on the budget tonight. Will that need to be delayed if we do? Problem?
No, the public hearing is, every public hearing is a planned, focused, own, before the board's got the budget, and the sentence done.
Okay.
And the budget, the board likely will be in the commission, give a G and 14.
Okay. Excuse me, so can you and Mr. Dalton get together and come up with something that you can bring back to the board in, in our next meeting?
Oh, right. You talking about this afternoon's meeting?
No, no.
You talking about the next regular board?
Future, man, it's, it's gonna take, yeah, to me, it's gonna take y'all a little while to sit down and go over all of this stuff and come up with another budget that, that we can look at.
All right.
For the Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, moving on with the agenda, we have the county administrator's report.
I think Mr. Chairman, we have a few items, and I think I handed out the additional items that came up first. This is Appalachian Power. This is Appalachian's continual notice of cost recovery and adjustment rate clause filed in preparation for mission. As always, this is, as I read, there's an upward trend on them recovering their capital costs. Second item is a Department of Housing. We put a grant application in with the rehabilitation, the board needs to pass the resolution that is attached, 20-1608.
I have a recommendation from the county administrator to pass the resolution, it's 2016 dash, what, Mr. Dalton?
'08.
And this is to apply for a grant.
Tear down the derelict structure.
I entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
I have a second.
Doug?
I have a motion to second, approve resolution 2016 dash '08. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. As we investigate and proceed with the recent county ordinance on abandoned houses, would these funds be available as individual grants, or can you get a block grant to do a group of them?
I think if you develop a plan and identify them all, and you got, since individuals own the property, then you have to identify those to get permission in those properties, which you could, I think, in the derelict structures, there's some adaptive reuse of that property.
Right.
Each, each cases, in finances.
Any more questions or comments? Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2016 dash '08. I'll do a roll call vote, Dr. Hausman.
Uh, uh.
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 The chair votes, uh. Next item, Mr. Dalton.
Next item is a proposal from Southwest Virginia Horsemen's Association, as drafted in the upper right-hand corner, that has proposed that they would donate $150,000, I believe initially, to construction of bleachers and proposed exposition center. And this is a proposed agreement that they presented includes setting up an account and building a certain type of bleacher, I think it's 3,000 seats, $50. Only comment I have, as you see, the bleachers, it's both down stadiums type seating, which requires concrete, stands underneath them to bowl them down to, which raises, increases the cost exponentially to this project. Based off what I've seen and understand of this, this is a proposal or a cash agreement or gift that the county can accept.
Does the board have any questions?
This is the money that they originally thought was going to be available for operation, I'm assuming?
Yes, Dr. Hausman, that's, was our understanding at the time, and this is what they brought to us within the last week.
Do we need action on this?
Well, you can do it many ways, it's the board's pleasure. You can reject this and appoint a couple of board members to negotiate a different kind of agreement that doesn't cost you $10 for a dollar. If you're asking for a recommendation staff, I would say reject it, appoint a committee to negotiate a better agreement that's more suitable, that both parties can live with.
Well, we can, I'd like to send it back to the Economic Development Committee for review, and for them to get with the Horsemen's Associations to work up an agreement that the county can support.
Will somebody make that as a money?
And I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
Doug?
I have a motion and a second to send it to the Economic Development Committee for study, and to get with the Horsemen's Association to work out an agreement, to bring it to the full board. Any other discussions?
May I ask a question? Does that motion include rejecting this current proposal?
Yes.
That's what I was going to ask, though.
Yeah.
That's a very broad statement, it doesn't really mean anything, except we're going to keep talking about a problem and not fix it. So, as far as that motion is going to be, reject this proposal, send it to the committee for recommendations, is that what we're talking about?
That was my understanding. Mr. Horny, do you want to make up part of your motion?
That would be my motion.
Does the second agree?
I agree.
Second agree, any more discussion?
And so then, once all this, it comes back to the full board, just like any recommendation from a committee?
Any other questions? Hearing that, I'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Horny.
Uh.
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 Hi.
Uh, the chair votes, uh. Next item, Mr. Dalton.
Hi, you, I laid before you an email from Central District Court. The clerk, I called him in on Friday afternoon, indicated that shredder is broken, maybe recycled, and she would like a heavier duty, heavier duty shredder, keep in her office. She gave us two price quotes, one is best price is an HSM straight cut, $994.
I'll, I'll make the motion, we amend and appropriate money for that, for the shredder, the $994.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Dalton is, and it is, you know, I know they have shredder companies that come around and shred documents for, you know, agencies, banks, and so on, and I think the Department of Social Service, you know, uses, wants to use that, and I think the clerk of the Juvenile Domestic Court has requested the same thing. Have we checked in, has it been discussed with Ms. Tate about that option?
We have not, we really don't have the details whether Social Services has got a contract or not. I know Juvenile Domestic has requested that they be able to use it when they come around. We do not have the details of when that happens or not.
And my understanding that, that paper is recycled for use?
That is my understanding.
Before, I know we have a motion on the floor to amend and appropriate the $994, would it be agreeable to the board to hold off on amendment and appropriate that money, or go ahead and amend and appropriate, and then have the discussions with Ms. Tate to see if she would consider using the service?
If we would approve, my suggestion would be approve appropriation with the suggestion that we talk to Ms. Tate, that she could use that in the later shredding.
I, I would agree with that. I think there are probably a few things that they probably need to shred immediately. And there, there are some things that they can probably store until, you know, company can come through, so.
Okay. So, you should make it, added that to your motion?
Yeah, I'd be glad to, you know, add that, but...
Okay, does the second agree with the amended motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more discussion? Do a roll call vote, Dr. Hausman?
Uh.
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 The chair votes, uh. Anything else, Mr. Dalton?
Thank you.
Okay, county attorney's report, Mr. Farley?
I do not have a report at this time.
Okay, we don't have to report. We've been here for about an hour, let's take about a 10-minute recess. And again, and continue on with our agenda, board supervisor's time, and I'll start with District One, Blackwood District, Dr. Hausman?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, District Two, Westwiffle?
The only thing I have is I've had you some more comments about the trash recycling centers, and I did hear you have some comments, compliments with the legacy, the trash picked up on the side of the road.
Okay. District Four, Fort Chisel District?
I've got a couple of things. One, I'd like to make a motion that we designate the property not involved with the Expo Center to be put in agricultural use, ceded until we have another use for it or sale of property.
Okay, do I have a second?
Doug?
I have a motion and a second, but remaining property not leased to the exposition center in agricultural use, in discussion?
What are you going to, what are you going to do with it? I mean, you going to sow it in grass and let somebody make hay off of it? Is that what you're talking about, or?
I'd raise goats on it, whatever works best, Gene.
We're going to have a demonstration. May I ask you?
Any other discussion?
When I first heard it, I was thinking land use, and then I was thinking, well, the county will pay taxes on their own property.
But it'll look good, it'll put, you know, it'll put the...
Don't do that, fuck.
...distance, Gene, from the highway.
Do what?
Have a nice green field there. Looks good from the highway, clearing...
Now, if you don't, if you don't do something with it for long, it'll be some muscle weed, didn't it?
It will have a thistle problem big time on that lower end where the wind dies.
And it does have a cosmetic effect to the, to the property, it makes it look better for us to show it to potential economic development in the future. And that's why we're clearing all the aldomoles off of it anyway, where people can see what, what kind of property that's ours, that we maybe can sell in the future and bring.
I thought maybe you figured out a way to make aldomole wine from these, didn't you?
No, not yet.
I looked at the Amish place that was aldomole jetty.
There's a guy been buying them over in Racine County and making something in New York that sells out of extracted aldomole, but Tim's got a thing for aldomoles, he wants to kill everyone he sees, so.
They're worse than rose bushes. Okay, any more discussion? I'll do a roll call vote, Dr. Hausman?
Uh.
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 The chair votes, uh.
Rest of that report, road things, we're bringing up Wednesday night, is that we're having a road hearing.
Yes, sir.
So, road...
Do you have any comments about what I sent you on the six-year plan? Tell us now so we can modify that.
The, the only thing is, I've, you know, I said yesterday, I'll mention Walters Road, just three tenths of a mile. I don't know that it will, will do any good, I still think that there's, just for that short a distance, you know, just basically a quarter of a mile, that there ought to be money somewhere, but I'll bring that up, that's only...
Danny used to tell me, find the money and we'll do it, but can you make a toll road out of it? Another thing, safety issue, I had a complaint from Mr. Grub, and normally his complaints are valid, and when you look into them, this is an old problem right in the restricted speed zone in Max Medicine, right in front of Presbyterian Church, where I realize the state don't own the right of way. We've got a blind entrance there. Either on those properties, since I guess the county actually owns that there, on the McGavick Corner property, can we take out that bush, and also could we start working with VDOT to make Well Street, I think that's Well Street, isn't it, that... Street, isn't it, that turns right off of 121? Make it one way to where you only enter there. He's had a near miss, I've had near misses, some of the folks that pull out there pulling cattle trailers. VDOT's going to tell us it's in a twenty-five mile speed limit, but nobody goes twenty-five miles coming over that hill. They slow down if there's a deputy, if they're sitting in the parking lot, but otherwise, they don't, it's where you turn into the Ruption Building. If that was one way, if they couldn't come back out, it wouldn't be a blind entrance. That would be the best fix, but getting rid of that bush would be a good temporary fix, but it won't improve the sight distance that much. Since there's nobody living on that property, is there a chance that we could round that corner off in daylight that corner a little bit more, so you could extend sight distance by about a hundred and fifty feet there?
I think VDOT would more than half of it, round that corner off. And we'll talk to them, but my best guess is they're going to say, you got to sign the easement before we do it.
Do you know that this position of that corner, if we go back to that old eighteen-ninety plot, the county probably has possession of that corner, not the land on it.
Well, we know how it misses, far in, just past Ms. Jones's house, there's property corners out there, there's property corners on the rear end, straight shots, maybe we could recover pretty easy just.
Does VDOT normally recognize the validity of that old plot?
No. That's, and the reason they don't take in that old plot is that's the reason we can build a bathroom out there in the right of way, because they don't claim, they didn't have any problems because they claimed a fifty-foot right. And we were outside their claimed driveway on 121 Old.
Mm-hmm. But we can talk about this later, but obviously, from the Presbyterian Church, if you measure fifty feet, it's going to get on that bank over there that's the blind spot. So, the secondary question is, since the recent death of the occupant, who has possession of that property now, that corner?
I didn't know about a recent, Ms. Wilson, that?
Yeah.
And McGavick's?
The trailer's gone.
McGavick family, the Davis guy?
Okay.
I think his name's Dickie there.
No, David, David McGavick Davis. Okay, so you think we need an easement from VDOT to fix that sight distance?
I think VDOT's going to ask you.
Okay. And there's a lot of utilities right there.
Yes.
That's it. Thanks, sir.
Okay, before the lead mines does theirs, I want to apologize, Mr. Willis, for passing you over. East Wiffle?
I'm easy to look over, Mr. Chairman, but no, I have nothing at this time.
Okay, then we'll move to District Five, Lead Mines District.
Thank you to VDOT. They did some much-needed repair on ninety-four. It's all right.
Okay. District Six, Spiegel District.
I don't have anything except for you talking about the six-year plan. I thought they were going to put Sheffy Town Road on there.
It qualified whatever it is, one point four million bucks. We did have a petition, pardon, and I know that's, we asked Mr. Russell, but there's still one point three or four million dollars, whatever it is. And Sheffy Town Road was like Pope Road, all of Pope Road's now on there. Sheffy Town was broken out into three segments, if I remember correctly, since. But it did qual, I think Sheffy Town did qualify as rural rest.
All right, that's what I thought he had told us to me. So the plan that he sent us, is Pope Road, they're only doing part of Pope Road?
Yes, from where it stops now to Siling, Siling's Road, where they're going, they're being surveyed for that route, there's only two, two trailers, and the house master. And Major Graham Road only takes it from close, Beetle Spinner, Red Lobos Pass, Beetle Spinner, down to the Carter's Fair. It doesn't take all of Major Graham in either. We're trying to get as many portions of where people came in here as possible.
I understand that. I mean, the only thing about Pope Road, to me, just doesn't, doesn't make sense, is that we're going to have three-quarters of it not paved. And to use Linda's words, you're talking about a road to nowhere. I mean, that road goes to nowhere because there is no bridge there, so I mean, when they get to the end of the pavement, they ain't got no choice. I mean, you're, you've got to keep going.
Well, I'd agree to keep going.
I mean, it's just, I don't know.
Will there be enough money left off of Pope Road to fix Wilkins Lane?
Wilkins is on.
Wilkins is on. We, that's one of the reasons we cut Pope.
Back to Siling.
At Siling's, to add as many of those small sections as we could, to get everybody, except the two town members, roads on the plane. You've got two roads on the plane, Coy's got a road on the plane, Wilkins, whatever it is, or maybe near this one. Joe's got two, Gary's got one or two. One.
Well, Wilkins belongs to Gene, ain't it?
Well, he's got three on the plane.
Well, no, I take it back.
Oh, he's got pump oilers, too.
There's, there's two roads, because I forgot about New Bethel. New Bethel and Mount Airy.
And I didn't request them because I figured the districts were, you know, better than me to...
If we get Walters Road, we get one for Charlie.
Did J. Tim make copies, I think I sent J. Mark what he said yesterday? Can you make seven or eight copies of that, please?
Can we, for tonight, get a map, possibly the roads that's going to be drawn on, what sections or something?
For tomorrow night?
Oh, yeah, tomorrow night.
Yeah, for tomorrow night, you can.
Sorry.
If it's...
My next forty-eight hours is hectic, so.
If you're saying, in a couple hours, we'll do our best, we'll make yours and then answer the rest.
I mean, you just start naming off roads, and you, I mean, you start saying, Major Graham, we're only going to this point, this point. And I mean, if we don't know that road, we don't know how much of it we're doing without having, or I don't, without having a picture of it.
You want them to state in math, or you want them to digital ortho?
I don't care how you do it, I mean, I just want it to where I can look at it and tell on a map.
Digital ortho, that gives you a better view of how many people. Except for Major Graham, there's not a lot of people, but twice, three times, or four times a year, on the weekend, you get ten thousand people. Or pumpkin season?
Yeah, I understand that.
Or haunted house season?
Well, it's like Pope Road. I mean, Pope Road, I think, had one of the lowest traffic counts that there was, but yet, they have been the longest-running people, in my opinion, that have come in here and complained about not paving their road.
Well, that's part of, I'm going to go explain this, there was petitions, number of times you came to the court and complained at cost, and how many people did it positively affect? And it's curdery, to do, yes, to do the other section of Pope Road, you'll just add it.
Thank you. I had that on the email, but I couldn't get it big enough to see.
Thank you. Well, we'll, we'll do that in double size.
I can see this, I just couldn't see it on my email. I was trying to get it on my phone. Y'all talked about my phone being so big, but it still wasn't big enough to see this stuff.
But I guess the real thought, you know, pump oil, we really never had a lot of people, but this got a nice road count, and you can.
Well, part of that's probably our fault because of the trash collection thing there, but part of it also, to me, belongs to blame to the town of Wiffle, because they put a park out there. I think they should have paid the hell, paved that road.
Well, this is what I would say, if you can get them to pay part of that, that empty up, sixty, seventy-five thousand dollars a year, that gets you half a mile of Sheffy Town Road.
Anything else from the Spiegel District?
I think that's all I had.
There's been a road. I'll have you have the cost for tomorrow night, or please follow, if that's okay.
Well, I think you're, I think there'll be people here about that road, is the reason I'd like to have information on it.
Okay. I just have one thing. Foster Falls Road, I requested last year for the trash, inmates picked trash up on it, and I had one of the residents, I can't think of her name right offhand, that stopped me in Walmart, and...
All the way through, or just one end?
What she's complaining about was towers, tires, refrigerators, junk, all over the road.
That's in the gravel section, huh?
So, I don't know exactly where she lives, but, and I haven't mentioned it to the sheriff, but I don't think they've sent anybody down there, but I do want...
Well, the sheriff, in the sheriff's defense, what instruction we gave him was to start on the primaries and work his way down, if we want to change our direction, because I'm not sure he's got all the primary to do.
Okay, I seen them on Chapman Road at some point in time before you get to the truck stops, but that's the only place I've seen them, so.
Oh, they've been on fifty-two north, ninety-four, fifty-two south, I've seen them over there.
Chief, how many days are they getting to work?
Started out, we only had one personnel that was able to operate about two days a week, but we've just hired another man, so we're hoping to get it up to about six days a week.
That's good to hear.
Just fuel and training, Mr., I, it should be done here personally.
Okay. But that's the only request that I had that...
Y'all could reassign one of the courtroom security guys and give him some walking boots. That's just a suggestion, Mr. Farley.
Okay. Anybody else, any supervisor have anything else to add to a report? If not, we'll move on to the consent counter. I entertain a motion to approve the consent counter.
I make a motion to approve the consent counter, if you may.
Have a second?
Okay.
Any discussions on the consent counter? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Ah.
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 Yeah.
Ah.
The chair votes. Next item is Tyler Technologies. Mr. Dalton?
Yeah, the contract amendment, we request approval of the authorization signed, it actually is a reduction in price for Tyler by a hundred and twenty-two dollars over a period of seven years.
What is the difference in, I know I read that, but what's the difference in the two programs that, is it...
We're going from a general billing to a, we had a bid management, but it doesn't really work even for what we're doing, and we're going to this general billing, I think it is Bruce explained to me, but everybody in the office is going to use it and agree that that's what they need instead of what we did.
I entertain a motion to approve the change.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Ah.
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 Chair votes. Mount Rogers National Recreation Area fiftieth anniversary celebration?
More for information, if you want to go RSVP.
And that is next week on the thirty-first?
It's Tuesday.
We have a presentation on Saturday with County Community College at four o'clock in the afternoon with live rasters, so it should be pretty good, so you're all invited. And I have brochures in the car if anybody needs them to hand out.
Yes, I would like, I'd like to have one. And that is Saturday, at what time?
Four o'clock, Forest Service presentation.
At the college?
At the college, Snyder Hall.
Snyder Hall. Next item, my agenda is the approving of the emergency operation plan, pass of the emergency operation plan resolution. Entertain a motion to adopt resolution twenty sixteen dash oh-six.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Have a second? I'll second. Any discussion?
Just for your knowledge, we will be bringing forth changes or amendments, or some things that, with ongoing discussions with the regional people, or resources, et cetera, over the next, before June third, but we need to get this adopted as is.
Okay.
One of the advantages of this one, one of the states' changes on this one, they've changed it, recommended we pull out all the contacts and resource list out of the document itself, and it's a separate attachment. That way, you can update and change the contact and resources without actually having to bring it back to the board each time to update the entire, but we'll be having some contacts and updates again.
Okay. Any other question or comments? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Ah.
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 The chair votes. Okay.
Your second part is the second resolution.
Yeah.
Option of the amendment.
I entertain a motion to adopt resolution twenty sixteen dash oh-seven. So move. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Ah.
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 The chair votes. Okay, Linda's got some brochures she'll give us. Mr. Dalton, before we go into closed session to talk about personnel, is there anything else we need to bring before the board?
You can hang that up where if you're...
Okay.
Somebody take Jake's, please.
You can hang that up where if you're...
We're not making applications or anything.
You could hang that up where it would be.
I'll take it up to the bank and put it up.
You need more than one, please?
I would say it, uh, I went to the Snyder Auditorium Saturday night and listened to the free music.
All right.
On, um, uh, it's on the third...
Thank you, ma'am.
Third Saturday of every month, there, uh...
What is it, string music or...?
Bluegrass.
Oh.
Old-timey music.
Was there a crowd?
Yeah. Dr. White was there, Charlie White was there.
Oh.
They was, they was a big, a big crowd at Snyder Auditorium Saturday night for the music. I will mention that they won't be having, uh, one in July, but it will start back up in, in August, some. But if you don't have anything to do on the third, third Saturday night of the month, uh, they have some good country music, old-timey music at Snyder Auditorium at the college. Okay, Mr. Dalton, I didn't, I don't think I heard you a while ago. Do you have anything else to bring before the board before we go into closed session? Here and then, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the With County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting to discuss the following, as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2, 371181, a personnel matter involving consideration or interviews of candidates for employment.
I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Here and then, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session.
As that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this close, to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard discussed or considered by the With County Board of Supervisors.
And I have a second on certification of the closed meeting resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes, uh. Mr. Dalton, before we recess until 7:00 tonight, do you have anything else we need to talk about? Here and then, we are in recess until 7:00 PM this evening.